Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Macon Bibb County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is our regularly scheduled meeting tonight. Today is Tuesday, December the 19th, and the time is now 7:05. We'd like to welcome everyone here today. We have a packed audience and some really good recognitions today. As many of you know, we had a commission meeting, pre-commission meeting earlier where we passed a lot of items, so you'll notice that some of those on the consent agenda tonight. So we're going to begin our meeting like we always do by welcoming everyone here today and calling it to order. And we'll begin with a prayer. So those of you that can and will, please stand and bow your head as Reverend Ficklin will lead us in a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance after that.
May we bow. Heavenly Father, we come at this time with thankful hearts that you have blessed us to be here during another season when we welcome the birth of your Son to the earth, who came with a message of peace to us all. Lord, now we thank you for the Sheriff's Response Team that we honor tonight and all the dedicated work that they do each day, putting their lives on the line, that all citizens might experience some peace. And then, Lord, we thank you for this young group of ballplayers from Vine Ingalls, who we also honor tonight, who show us that it is all worth it because they are young people who are yet to develop and become the productive citizens that we work hard for them to inherit a good city. We ask that you would continue to bless our commission as they continue to make the right kinds of decisions that are going to be best for our entire county. Come now, be with them as they deliberate in this meeting. It is our prayer, in the name of your Son, Jesus, we do ask and give thanks. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. To the Father, the United States of America, and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Once again, thank you for everyone who with us tonight. We do have some important recognitions that we're going to handle first. These are presentations, and our first is going to be the congratulations to the Vine Ingalls Senior League Softball Team. I know I was able to go out there and watch them practice. They put in a lot of hard work and showed very well for our community, and we're certainly proud of them. That is in the cusp of Commissioner Mayor Protem Clark's district, so we've asked him tonight to honor them and do their recognitions with their certificates.
Yeah, thank y'all for being here, and congratulations. This is incredible. I've got a bunch of certificates. I've got a whole pile of them, and what I'm going to do is call everybody's name out and hand them out, and if you guys would go line up here for a picture afterwards so we can honor y'all appropriately. So we'll just start. And I'll go ahead and say what we're honoring for. We're honoring, the certificates say, it's a certificate of achievement, and it's on behalf of Macon Bibb County. We congratulate the Vine Ingalls Senior League Softball Team on the District Five Georgia State and Southeast Region Championships. So first up, we have Brianna Pryor from Central. Trinity Wilkins from Howard. Not here, all right. Zaria Blasen Game from Rutland. Lizzie Bridget, no, okay. Sorry. Hannah Gardner from the Military College Prep. Nakaria Mallory from Howard. Okay. You're in the hot seat. Irene Green from Westside. Kendall Patton from Twigs Academy. Shane Kitchen, assistant coach. Jim McDonald, the team manager. Fleming Wilson from Tattletale. Amy McDonald, the team mom. There she is. Blasen Game? Okay. Vincent Blasen Game was honored to the assistant coach. So this is yours. Got you, there you go. Congratulations, guys. Thank you for the coaching team, for the impact you're having on these young women's life, and thank y'all for representing Macon Bibb County and the district so well. So congratulations, and we'll all get a picture. And yeah, they won the District Five Southeastern, hold on, I'll tell you exactly. I'm gonna mess it up. It's the Vine Ingalls Senior League Softball Team on the District Five Georgia State and Southeastern Region Championships. That's what they won. Yeah, so congratulations. Sorry. District Five has won?
Yeah.
And then the state was won?
Southeastern was one.
Oh, okay, so these are three different championships. They won the district, they won the state, and they won the region. These are three different championships. Four-time state championship.
Let her speak next year. Mayor Protem Clark. Next, we have Commissioner Bill Howell for presentation and proclamation for the Sheriff Response Team.
If you guys will come on up and stand up here along with the sheriff and any of the other representatives of the Sheriff's Department. So while they're coming up, I want to just say a couple of things on just personal stuff. In 1967, my father went to work for the Bibb County Sheriff's Department. I was a wee lad of about nine, and some of my fondest rememories of that time in my life was getting a ride in the sheriff's car. That was just a huge thing to me as a kid. Later on, my brother served as a Macon Police Department officer and also served for the Sheriff's Department. So to say that my roots run deep with the sheriff's office is an understatement, and I want you guys to know personally, I appreciate what you did. As a commissioner in District Seven, we've had some issues out there with some different stuff, part of that being abuse of a park we got out there. And we got them, I got a tip that they were out there one night, made a couple of phone calls. These guys showed up, and let me tell you something, when these guys show up, I hope they're not looking for you because when they come, they do business. And you know, a lot of times, we hear the news media and everybody talks about, well, you know, they've only had five or six sheriffs working, or 10, or whatever the number that we hear that particular day. Most people don't realize that these guys are out there, you don't even know they're there until they're needed. But when they show up, they show up and they do business. And guys, I want y'all to know, I was proud of y'all that night, and we hadn't had any more trouble in the park. So I appreciate it. I've got everybody a copy of the proclamation so everybody will have, so you'll know what it is. And if I can read this and get through it without being too emotional, here we go. Proclamation, Office of the Mayor, Macon Bibb County. Whereas the Macon Sheriff's, sorry, guys, I can't read for the glare. May have something to do with these old eyes. Well, I can't read either, but, oh, that's much better. Whereas the Macon Bibb County Sheriff's Department Response Team, known as SRT, was created by Sheriff David Davis in 2014 and was tasked with addressing troublesome crime issues in Macon Bibb County, and in 2021 was expanded and ultimately placed under the leadership of Lieutenant Cedric Pinson. And whereas, since that time, the Sheriff's Office, the Sheriff's Response Team, SRT, has emerged as a highly effective component of crime suppression and high-risk warrant service. In the past year alone, there's accomplished, there's a constant stand as a testament to combating crime with, y'all want to listen close to these numbers, 924 arrests, 244 firearm recoveries, 17 and 19 warrants served, and since 2021, conducted over 7,000 traffic stops and made over 3,000 arrests. And whereas, SRT is comprised of four canines and 14 dedicated deputies, and I hope I don't butcher some of these names too much, Lieutenant Cedric Pinson, Sergeant George Wetherspoon, Sergeant Travis Carlisle, Sergeant Roderick Smathers, Corporal K-1 Pedigree, close, close, is what it is, Corporal Matthew Grubb, Deputy Dontavus Jones, Deputy Jeremy Holmes, Deputy Jackson, Deputy Jeffrey Johnson, Deputy Brandon Smith, Deputy Frederick Gray, and Deputy Dustin Mobbs. And whereas, specializing in crime suppression, the SRT employs a strategic approach to diminish criminal activities within the community, and intense operations, I can't read, and intensive operations involve targeting the deployment, the apprehension of individuals engaged in criminal enterprises, and has been proven instrumental in disrupting criminal networks and elevating the overall safety of Macon Bibb County. And whereas, the Macon Bibb County Sheriff's Office continues the mission to protect and serve, the SRT remains at the forefront, demonstrating that through specialized units, law enforcement can decisively address criminal, crime, and ensure the well-being of the community. And whereas, whether it's dealing with serious felons, trespassers, street racers, illegal liquor houses, or dealing with catalytic converter thieves, the SRT will continue to meet the needs of the community and improve quality of life for the citizens and visitors throughout Macon Bibb County. I therefore, Lester and Miller, do hereby proclaim December 19th, 2023, as Macon Bibb County Sheriff's Office SRT Day in Macon Bibb County, and I urge all the citizens to observe this day and to publicly salute the service of the Special Response Team for going above and beyond the call of duty as they protect and serve our community. And all you guys that want to come down and get pictures or be in the picture, come on down.
Go ahead, we stand up here, we're good. Okay, go ahead. We want to get our outfits.
If we get across the room, definitely. Yeah, that would be good. And this is, we're at some, I was talking to, it's, I was, 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 I was,[1706.63]
our concern and frustration with the demolition of the Bateman Way structure. Your failure to notify the Pleasant Hill neighborhood of the proposed impending demolition action not only showed a total disregard of our right to know what the government is planning for our community, but also undermines the relationship established between the two bordering collegial and historic Macon neighborhoods, Vineville and also Pleasant Hill. The racial undertones of your obvious communication with the predominantly white neighborhood and not the predominantly black neighborhood is a testament to how far Macon has come in race relations. Failing to consider Pleasant Hill's past connections with the Bateman Way store, as well as potential use, it could have served with our city county investment and partnership. And to least discuss it with Pleasant Hill residents was a gross oversight. You can argue that you tore down a blighted building. However, counter to that, know that you planted seeds of distrust and dredged up emotions of disenfranchisement to a community still reeling from the ravages of redlining. As a revitalizing neighborhood, we value collaboration efforts that increase social cohesion, safety, and stabilize the built environment. We feel that Macon Bills County removal of the Bateman Way building without communicating the demolition plan was woefully disrespectful and reminiscent of the historical discriminatory policies and practices that have led to the deterioration and the demise of many predominantly black neighborhoods. Stateholders are working diligently to change that trajectory of our neighborhood. We appreciate also that Macon Bill County has made some important investments toward improving Pleasant Hill and fulfilling some of the mitigation deserved towards reviving, like Booker T. Washington Center, establishing the Little Richard House, the Resource Center, also in affecting some blight removal. We appreciate that. However, only through appropriate, consistent communication, collaboration, and increased investment can we continue to move forward. While we make no excuses for our unfortunate part of the profound social media conflict that took place with you, and in response to that, we felt it was relevant oversight of our neighborhood, please understand that it comes from a deep sense of responsibility to Pleasant Hill's people and its heritage. In the future, we ask that any plans to destruct, demolish, or otherwise modify the buildings of landscape of the Pleasant Hill neighborhood be communicated through the Pleasant Hill Neighborhood Organization. With any opportunity for all residents' input, this more respectfully, a collaborative approach allows for all voices to be heard and incorporated while increasing the likelihood of a mutually beneficial outcome. So sincerely from the Pleasant Hill Neighborhood Organization, we just want to say, moving forward, we would love to be in communication, because we love the idea of having a direct line to our local government with the history of our community, to have an input on anything that has and will go on. And again, I just want to thank you for the time, for our mayors and our commissioners. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you for being here today, and we look forward with continued collaboration with the Pleasant Hill Association. I'll be reaching out to you soon to discuss some other matters, sir. Thank you. Mr. George Muhammad? Mr. Muhammad, thank you for being here again tonight. And as you know, we have five minutes, and your reason or explanation just said community issues, sir, so we'll wait to start the time till you get there.
Peace and blessings. Don't have a whole lot to formally say to you, but what I really, in general, want to address is the input and inclusion of the community. And really, this administration, from the beginning, in eliminating the committees from the beginning, began on a foot of not including voices as it had been and as it should be. Abolition of those committees began that movement. And in many cases, we are not being talked to, we're not being reported to with various issues that happen in the community. You can take the amphitheater, which I am not against, and I'm not one of those naysayers, but I do say that people should be included and that those neighborhoods, and I alluded to this last week, that Bloomfield and Westminster and Unionville and those areas around the Macon Mall, those citizens need to be addressed in person. It needs to be meetings in their neighborhoods with them and talk to them and let them know about what is coming, how their taxes will be affected, how their homes will be affected, if there's an issue of gentrification. All around this community, we need to be talked to. There was an infrastructure grant that was brought from the federal government that was open for the federal government design, specifically for neighborhoods that were adversely impacted by the interstates. And Pleasant Hill is a poster child for that, split in two. Unionville is affected as well as East Macon. We have not had any forums, we've not had anybody from this government to sit down with the people of Pleasant Hill, any of those neighborhoods, and talk about that infrastructure grant. I understand the grant was applied for, and we did not get it. It was about $5 million, but no discussion when you know the scars that have happened to this community. There are a number of things we could go around the community with the lack of inclusion, the lack of talking to people, the lack of reaching out and really sitting down in person with the people. Some of the representatives are not present on a regular basis, and these are things that we feel. There's a lot of good things. We're in a bicentennial year, and we like to celebrate the good and feel good and, you know, just have a nice, positive environment in which we're talking to each other. But underneath that, there's some real serious problems, and we really have got to seriously respect each other enough and have the kind of leadership that represents everyone, even with this bicentennial. I mean, we're behind the eight ball. Every neighborhood should have banners up in its neighborhood, and we're at the end of the year now, saying, celebrating the bicentennial. I mean, so that Bloomfield and Fort Hill and Unionville and Pleasant Hill and Kitchen Pride, all these areas would know that there's a bicentennial. A lot of these people don't even know that this is 200 years. They're not even being included in it. And there's so many, and that's just kind of a symbolic thing, but it goes deeper than symbolism. So, you know, I just, I didn't have a whole lot of things to say. And the last point I'm going to make, I hope I have enough time, is on that Bateman Way. Maybe the building was in bad shape. It's hard for me to believe it, in that in three years, it had deteriorated to that part that it had to be torn down, but something needed to be done. The vision of turning a building that was a grocery store not into another convenience store that would have gambling, not into another convenience store that would have any alcohol, but fruits and vegetables in it, a health food store, a place that would enhance the lives of both the Vineville residents and the Pleasant Hill residents, as well as the surrounding community. If you look at places like Atlanta, like the Severnanda Co-op Store and Health Food, we're talking about a neighborhood that was hit by COVID. The main issue is nutrition. The main issue is not having an immune system that's strong. The main issue is not having access to fresh foods. We have not seen enough from the American Rescue Fund in terms of investing along these issues and remedying these issues. And I don't, I'm glad, we have great employees. We need to give our employees bonuses. That's great. But that money was really designed for people who were adversely affected by COVID, most adversely affected. And I don't know if there's anything left, but you know, I've been hitting this, I've been hitting it from the beginning, I've been saying it from the beginning, that that money needed to be spent on the people, and it would be a shame and a crime if after all the time has passed, we go back and we're still in the same condition. We don't have anything to show for that money we received, $177 million. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't want to engage with it, but Macon Bibb County did not receive $177 million. I think, actually, it was 76, but I don't want people to continue to get that misinformation out. Part of that money was the school system money. But thank you, Mr. Muhammad, for being here today. Thank you for your continued involvement in all of our community and our boards that you serve on. And certainly, like I told Mr. Smith, I will be in contact with you very soon for some input on an important issue. So at this time, we have, is there anyone else here that signed a speak that we haven't been recognized yet? This time, we have a couple of people who like to make a point of personal privileges. I think Commissioners, at least one or two have asked me, so I'll start with Mr. Paul Bronson.
Hey, greetings to all. Happy holidays to everyone that is tuned in and watching, especially to our fellow Commissioners. Not to stir up an argument, but mapping, I know some conversation has been made in regards to the map that was placed out. Wanted to kind of get some clarification on, if you don't mind. The map that is now currently out, is that in effect now, or is that in effect for 2024? If you have been asking that question now, then if not, don't worry about it, but that's just one I want to kind of throw out there. And then what are we looking at to, what information are we sending out to residents to let them know that the maps have changed? Those are two things I do want to kind of put on everybody's radar. Outside of that, Santa spotting is happening this Thursday. I'm getting the eyes like, yep, where is he going with this? Santa spotting is happening this Thursday at 5:30. We will be chauffeuring, shall I say, Santa Claus around the town to see all the boys and girls out there. Decorating for the truck will take place tomorrow between 2:00 and 5:00, so anyone that is interested in coming, if you have groups that are interested, by all means, come out. We are still seeking donations of lights, wreaths, ribbons, and wrapping paper. And then, of course, over the next few weeks, Mr. Mayor has spoken before, beginning with some of the fellow Commissioners to discuss the Small Business District, Public Safety Tuition Assistance, and the South Macon Development.
Thank you, Mr. Bronson.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Jones, did you have something earlier? You said, no, sir. Commissioner Tillman?
Yes, just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season and looking forward to 2024. There's some great things happening. We're so glad and pleased that earlier, we thanked our county manager and our engineers and our public works folks for the resurfacing of Highland Fourth Road and I failed to mention Morgan Avenue. And just thank you guys so much, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman. Anyone else? Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to be on a lighthearted note here. Friday a week ago, we had the sneaker ball. I don't know where you got that from, but it was something else. I went and got my glitzy sneakers. I have them on tonight, by the way. It was an event, I wanted you to see them, but it was an event that was a lot of fun for this community. And if you want to talk about something with inclusion, I want to say something. The mayor said before we really got into that event that night, that he said, look next to you, look at the tables next to you, look around you, see everybody getting together, having fun, enjoying themselves, getting along. Didn't matter what color you were, what race you were, if you were a Democrat or Republican, everybody got along. I even sat with Commissioner Lucas's son and daughter at the table and got to meet and dance with David Lucas Jr. that night and had a great time. But you got to know people better at things like that. So if we as a community can come together for one event, I want to see us try to do that going forward in the future. And that is an event of inclusion, because anybody could come and anybody did come. It was a great event, and I thank you for coming up with that idea. And hopefully, we'll continue to do that with other things in our community so that we will all feel a part of it and we can all get along. So I want to wish everybody a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen, certainly, I wouldn't come up with that myself. There's some members in this, in this chamber today who had to bring up the idea to me, and I certainly was open to it. And we made a very intentional effort to make sure that that ball represented the diversity that we have in our community. So Commissioner Howell?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to say, you know, now, we probably won't be back until after the first of the year, so from my family to yours, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Second thing, for those of y'all that have been hiding under a rock the last week, I want to personally thank the mayor and everybody that was involved in the new pickleball deal that happened at the mall this week. And if you wasn't at the, if you didn't go by the mall, or you missed the stuff on Facebook, that place was packed. It almost looked like yesteryear when I remember going to the mall at Christmas time, doing my last-minute shopping, as us men do. You had to hunt a parking spot, so that was our first event there of many, and I'm looking real forward to seeing what the future holds for the Macon Mall. Last but not least, mark your calendars, December 29th, we will be renaming the Gilead Gym after Mr. Grady Gillis. Mr. Grady Gillis was involved from the opening of the school to the closing of the school when it was a private school over there. Mr. Gillis employed literally thousands of Middle Georgia folks at service stations and tire stores, and Mr. Gillis is a great mentor of mine and a great American. So if you have time and opportunity, if you're interested, it's December 29th, which is on a Friday, and it's at 10 o'clock, so come out and help us celebrate the naming of the gym out there. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Anyone else? Okay, well, this is officially our last meeting of 2023. Some of you we may not see until the first of next year. Our next meeting scheduled, by the way, Commissioners, is January the 9th. That will be our first committee of a whole meeting during the daytime, and our next meeting will be December 16th at night. The first meeting falls on a day or holiday, so we don't have that like we did before. So Merry Christmas to each of you and all your family. Hope you have a safe and wonderful time to spend with your family, and good health to all. And I look forward to seeing what 2024 brings with all of us together. Thank you very much. This meeting is hereby adjourned.
Thank you. Really. Thank you. 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 Thank you.